Well, let's call the meeting to order. All right, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna rise.
I know.
It's the right thing to do, right? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever. All right. I'm trying to figure out how to have the agenda up on the screen. There we go. Tom's got it, all right. Okay, any motions on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to point out to the council that we did provide a revised agenda that has a couple changes in the consent agenda. It does remove item G, which was award the police department project and alternates to Greystone Construction. I'll give the council an update on that under administrative reports. And it does add adopt resolution 2025 approving pay time off policy in response to COVID-19 pandemic and approving Alcoa New Market PRO, which stands for phased retirement option agreement with assistance to the administrator.
Any motions?
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion by Timmerman, any second? Was that Cephesad?
Yeah, that was me, but I thought I heard somebody else, too.
Okay. All right, all in favor, we'll do roll call vote. Kate?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Is Amanda on this?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, hi.
She's not in my screen box. Okay, I... So we have... Are we missing? I feel like we're missing someone. Oh, Don.
Hi.
Okay. That's five votes for passing consent agenda. You know, I just realized I... Or excuse me. The agenda, not consent agenda, I apologize. No presentations, proclamations, public comments. Anyone on for public comment? We'll close public comments. Any changes to consent agenda beyond what was previously stated?
The two items H and I were added at relatively late. If the council would like those full printing for discussion, it would not hurt my feelings.
Okay. Numbers?
Consent agenda.
Motion by Timmerman?
Second.
Second by Burden. Roll call vote. Kate?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Amanda?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
I vote I as well.
Could you give me the first and second on that again, Mr. Mayor?
It was Timmerman and Burden.
Thank you.
We have no general business. Tom, you have the agenda up on the screen, right?
I do, let me scroll down just a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, no public hearings, no general business, so we're on to reports.
So, under reports, just a couple of items. I do want to double check with the council that we do have the stay at home order that goes through April 10th, that the council would like to hold the April length meeting as a virtual meeting.
I see no reason not to. Anyone object?
Nope, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Right.
All right, so that's what we're doing.
Two, as I indicated, I'd give an update on the contract with Greystone Construction for the PD addition. We are still grinding through the little nitty gritty tales you have on any contract. We... Looks like we'll have those wrapped up probably tomorrow. The contractor would like to get going right away. They want to make sure that they get ordered, their subs get in orders for materials. They'd like to take advantage of available openings that they have in their schedule. Is the council all right if I schedule a special meeting for the latter part of next week? If we can get it all pulled together.
Timmerman is yes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think everyone's okay, I see Amanda nodding.
Okay. On other items related to COVID-19, one thing we... Brady and I were in a meeting today that consisted of all of the chiefs of police and the city administrators. I'll let Brady talk about the PD portion of that meeting under his report. But one of the interesting things is that there's a wide range of strategies that the other communities are employing within their various departments. One of the biggest factors is dependent on their size and the depth of bench that they have. So the bigger the city, they have more flexibility with how they want to address staffing issues within various departments. The one thing that I've found through those discussions, but also through the various listservs that I've been engaged in over the last week, is that similar community cars that have similar size and have similar staff levels are pretty much in things very much the way that we are. And what I'm finding overall is that as a city, we're typically with or ahead of the curve with regards to what we're doing, how we're doing it, and the types of things that we're being, we're preparing for. Any questions on COVID-19 related items? Okay, hearing none. One thing I did want to point out for the council, I did send something out earlier in the week. Safewise, which is a private security company, has named us again one of the safest cities in Minnesota. We were named the fourth safest city in Minnesota. We were also named as the fourth safest city in Minnesota in 2019. And back in 2018, we were named as the first or the safest city in Minnesota and the eighth safest city in the United States. I contacted Safewise and basically asked how difficult it is to be in the top five for three consecutive years, because when you start getting down to those level of statistics, it takes very little to push you one way or the other. And they responded that it is extremely rare for somebody to stay in the top five for multiple years. So that, I think, is something, says something about our community. We have a post that will be going out on Saturday to promote this idea. We're going to be boosting it. We feel it's a good thing to promote about the community. As I indicated in my email to the council, one of the things we've heard in the past when we promoted that fact is, oh my gosh, let's hope people were safe and all of a sudden all the hormones are going to come down to Elko New Market. Well, one, that didn't happen. And two, the fact that we continue to be the safest city in this, one of the safest cities in the state year after year after year shows that that doesn't happen. So we'll push back on that if we get any social media on that.
Why are we looking at Brady?
So, at this point, I don't have anything additional to report under administration. Do you have something for me?
Carson.
I'm gonna mute Brady.
Brady, that's exactly why I muted mine, too.
All right.
My son likes to talk like me, so, sorry about that. Is it my turn for the report? Is that what was?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
Corey didn't have anything for me to report to council, so it would be Brady.
You ready for my report, Mayor?
Absolutely.
All right. Good afternoon. Basically, just to jump off of what Tom was saying, we had the meeting today with all the chiefs and all the city administrators, and we found that everything we've been doing for the last week and a half is what others are starting to do now. Because we're smaller, have less infrastructure, we're able to kind of move quick. And our... I'll go through just kind of some of our protocols that other agencies are using. One, every day, we're disinfecting all the touchpoints in our police department. We do have the sheriff's department and state patrol that use our facility. So every day, those touchpoints are being disinfected. Officers have been advised when they do traffic stops to disinfect their hands after the traffic stop to watch where they put the license and paperwork in their squad cars to lessen the exposure. And then after the traffic stop, they disinfect their total workstation. They have to advise or disinfect their squad cars every day at the beginning, the end of their shift to protect the other officers for exposures. And what we found is that all the other departments were doing the same thing. So we're kind of the head of the curve on that. We don't have anybody down that's been exposed, so we don't have anybody on quarantine. None of the other departments have anybody off due to exposure quarantine, but they are implementing, because of their size, they're sending people home, half their department home voluntarily and keeping them home kind of on the bench in case somebody does get infected. So because they're larger, they're able to do that. Because of our small size, we have less exposure, because our officers aren't working at the same time. We only have one officer typically working. And during the overlap, they're not in the same spot at the same time. So a lot of the protocols we've done, it's good to see that all those other agencies are doing the same things. So we have our emergency schedule that we can put in place if we need to. And it's kind of, for us, it's a wait and see game. Scott County doesn't have a ton of exposure in it, so we're not seeing any knock on wood here. So I think Mayor and council, we're in good shape. I think we're ahead of the game. We're a lot luckier than a lot of other agencies because of our size and our community size. And so I think we should be in really good shape moving forward. We have all the plans in place, then provide excellent service. If for some reason we can't, I've talked to the sheriff and he assured me he's going to step in and their department will handle emergency calls, so we will not be without emergency services. Any questions on the COVID end of it? All right, then, just to touch base with the four safest city. I had mentioned it in my annual review, our numbers were down. What that tells me, once we got that statistic, that we remained fourth, it's kind of a good thing, is that everybody has had a decrease in crime, which is a good thing. Name a number of things for that. One, the unemployment rate up in 2019 at least. And a very good economy. Those things drive down crime rates typically. So that and our extra coverage, I think it kept us in that fourth place spot. So I was, gave all the kudos to my staff for all the hard work they do. And we appreciate the staffing you allow us to have. And it was another great year for us. So other than that, I'm open for questions if anybody has any.
Maybe on, to follow up on Brady's thought about, we're still providing the same level of service. We will be, starting tomorrow, tomorrow, we'll be putting out some promotional stuff with the general theme of, we're still working and we're here to help you, reiterating a lot of what we've already communicated to the public about the services and changes to services. But the services are still being provided, just albeit maybe in a slightly different fashion from what they've been providing in the past.
I would just say congratulations. Congratulations on, you know, this is a good, this is a great achievement for the city and for yourself, chief, and something the community should be proud of, so, awesome stuff.
Thank you, we're proud.
Tom, do you want to just kind of handle going through the agenda? Because it's kind of tricky for me to have the agenda on the screen and go through it.
Okay. There, Rich, do you have anything for an engineering report?
No, unless there are questions, I don't really have anything to bring up.
Good to see you, Rich.
Okay, so the next item, Mr. Mayor, would be the community development report on the interchange utility project. If you give me one second, I'm going to screen share and bring up that presentation for everybody to view. So Renee will handle the initial portion of the presentation.
Sure. Mayor and council, the first couple slides are just to give those that may not be familiar with the project, a little background on the project that we'll be discussing. So just to point out that the, there's been significant work completed to advance some sites at the I-35 County Road 2 interchange towards development. A lot of work and studies have been completed to advance pad-ready sites. One of the biggest obstacles that we have in further development at this point is the lack of sanitary utilities, sanitary sewer and water. The city does have a solution that we have studied and worked with our engineer on a solution to serve these properties. Route has been identified, right of way has been acquired, and the plans have been basically completed to 98, 95%. When I say plans, I mean construction plans that would be used to bid the project. So the, on the map here, you can see the light gray line on the north side of County Road 2 is an existing sanitary sewer interceptor that takes sewage from our community to, towards a Met Council treatment facility. And then on the south side of County Road 2, there's always line shown that shows how water utilities could be extended to properties on both the east and west side of the interchange. And then finally, in the blue, is how sanitary sewer on the east side of the interchange could be handled to get it up to the existing sewer interceptor. The city and county, Scott County Board and the Scott County CDA Board held a joint meeting on January 27th to discuss the concept of extending utilities to this area. There's an estimated cost associated with this of approximately $3.6 million. At this joint meeting, the city was really there to introduce the concept to the other agencies and request financial backing of either Scott County or the CDA to implement the project. Following that meeting, a technical evaluation committee was formed at the direction of the city council, county board, and CDA to further discuss and evaluate the project. So the first meeting of the technical evaluation committee was held on March 6th, 2020. It involved representatives from all agencies, not only technical staff, but also the finance representatives from each of the agencies, as well as a outside consultant that is well versed in property values and development. Going into that first meeting, there was a understanding that the city would oversee all aspects of the project from bidding, construction, financing, construction observation, also with the understanding that the city has worked with the two large landowners who make up that interchange area and that they have agreed to contribute a total of $100,000 annually, which could be used to offset any debt service on the project. And then the CDA heard the request, I think, under discussion was that the CDA would then guarantee payment of debt service not collected through these two develop, or two landowners, or trunk fees that would be collected by the city upon development of the properties. So during that meeting, the CDA representatives did express a desire to reduce the financial risk to the CDA and basically came back and said, you know, asked us to evaluate with our city council, can the city commit any additional annual financial contribution to the project? Can we guarantee any, anything else? Because under the current scenario that was outlined in the previous or just, just reviewed, the city really isn't participating unless there's development. Again, the CDA is just really wanting to reduce annual risk and, to the CDA.
I have a question, if we're, are we not at that point yet?
I think you can ask a question anytime.
Okay, so they're, they're offering to guarantee we would issue the debt. The debt would be serviced, $100,000 of the debt service would be paid for from the two major property owners.
That's correct.
If they're guaranteeing, in the banking world, that just means if we're at default, but then goes on them. It goes on the guarantor.
That's correct.
So as I understand this, we as a city are responsible for servicing the debt, really?
Well, we all...
The landowners are contributing.
So, Mr. Mayor, we ultimately hold the responsibility and would hold the responsibility. There are ways that we're looking at this would be issued. One, it's understood that we would not be paying, so they would be guaranteeing up to the full amount of the debt if we don't have the capacity to pay any given year. But our agreements with them would establish that our ability to pay would be based on what we collect off of the subject properties. Unless, as part of the discussion tonight, we agree that we're going to guarantee something above and beyond that. Also, they're looking at ways in which we might be able to, from a bonding standpoint, how it would be structured, whether it's our geo bond and we have a separate agreement, just they're agreeing to cover so much a year, or if they would also put their geo backing, or the county might also put their geo backing behind it as well through like a JPA or joint powers agreement arrangement. Those are things that we're currently working on and getting answers to for purposes of our next technical work group meeting.
Well, if there's, I saw an estimate, $350,000 is the estimated debt service, annual debt service, right?
Was it $340,000? We do have it a little bit later in the slide.
In that ballpark.
Yeah.
And we're getting, we're collecting $100,000, so there's a gap there. Is the taxpayers of Elko New Market then the ones that would be paying that gap?
Under the arrangement with the county, the county would cover the gap and then...
Okay, so they're obligated to pay, they're not, which is a little bit more than a guarantor, so guarantee.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's my question, we can continue on, sorry for holding you up, Renee.
That's, that's just fine. So we basically are, came back as staff and, you know, we, we really feel that there's kind of four options for the city participating financially, and that's to use existing utility account reserves to raise utility rates, to raise the general levy taxes, or any other reserves that the city might have. And we're going to kind of step through those four options, and I think Tom will take it from here.
So if you look at the existing utility account reserves as an option, basically what that's saying is that we're going to utilize reserves that we have on hand to help service the debt, much in the same way that we use the capital projects fund to help service debt for projects that we have ongoing right now, such as the roundabout, the police department addition, or the city's portion of the cost for purchasing new fire apparatus. Right now, we have approximately $100,000 projected end of year in the water account, similar to the sanitary sewer account. We already have a significant amount of debt on the books, counting against both of those major utility funds. As the council is aware, we have a financial obligation related to the Met Council interceptor that goes back to the last decade, and that has a significant liability out there for us. The council is aware that that has been reduced. We did negotiate a circuit breaker, if you want to call it that, with the Met Council, which we are expected to hit this year that will cap that liability. But there is a significant amount of liability in the annual debt service associated with that within this sewer fund. And we also have the water treatment facilities, everybody's aware. It has a big impact on our water rates, and there's, and because of that, there's a significant amount of debt service associated with that. So as the council is aware from our previous utility fund analysis presentations, there's a great deal of sensitivity within the funds and a limited capacity because of their current, one, because of the current balance that we have in the funds, and two, because of the existing commitments that the funds already have to be able to take on additional debt. And the council is aware that we have, by policy, minimum fund balances, which are based on good rules of thumb for municipal finances, for utility funds. And we currently are not at those minimums. Given what we are projecting for modest, reasonable growth outside of any slowdown, economic slowdown we might see, it will be at least half a decade before we reach those minimum fund balances. So there's a certain sensitivity to taking it on. Later, if the council wants, I can walk you through the model and show you what those actual impacts would be. If you'd like, after the presentation. The other way that you can do it is if you're not using reserves, you could simply raise your rates. You would simply raise them enough to offset what it would take to recover that amount of debt service. I can tell you right now that that would be a substantial increase on our rates, which are already amongst the highest in the region. You'll see here on the slide, we've re-provided some of the information we've had previously related to our rates compared to other communities. Another option would be using property taxes. The way that would likely work is we would use, for instance, an EDA authority to levy debt to help offset or pay for a portion of that debt service. But one way or another, if you were to levy, do a levy increase for the full amount, you would see a substantial increase. So the council is aware that, based on the 2020 budget, every $19,000 of additional levy is equivalent to a 1% tax impact, or about $12 annually to the typical home. If you were to levy for the entire estimated debt service of $340,000 a year, that would equate to an additional $214 per year over 15 years for the typical home, based on the assumptions we have here. If the civic, city was to levy just for the $240,000, assuming the $100,000 we'd be receiving in assessments for prepayment of trunk fees, you'd still be looking at $152 per year over 15 years for that amount of debt service. So there would be a notable tax impact for the, for homes in Elko New Market. The other option is to look to other city reserves. The two other places we have money, where we have a balance of any sizable amount aside from the utility funds and the general fund, and the capital, is the capital fund and the economic development fund. As the council is aware, we have earmarked out fully any projected revenues that we have within the capital projects fund. So there's no available undesignated reserve balance there. However, we do have $80,000 in the economic development fund that is not currently earmarked for anything. But there is also no regular revenue source for that fund either. So it's $80,000, and if we were to use that, it would only fund a portion of one years of debt service, and then we will have eliminated that tool. So the reason that we originally went and talked to the CDA about the concept of them providing financial assistance is because all of those options that we just ran through have very limited capacity and have significant impacts, either through taxes, not enough capacity, or utility rates potentially, or risk to increase utility rates for our residents. And so that's why we began the discussion with the county and the CDA in the first place. Now, what they're asking us to do is, can we throw, put a little more skin in the game? And so the question that we have for council tonight is, do we feel we have the capacity to put any more skin in the game? If so, how much and from where? And that's information we would take back for our discussions with the work group as we try and identify, put the package together. Are there any questions at this point?
None from me, and I'm not hearing any from anybody else. None from me, and I'm not hearing any from anybody else.
I don't have any questions at all.
So what are, I guess, I apologize, I can't have the packet up on my screen, so I, but what specifically are you asking of us? Are you asking if we want to use any of these options, or?
So realistically, any options that we would have, I don't think we have the ability to rely on reserves or projected reserves within utility funds. So I think that's entirely off the table. Likewise, I don't think just committing eighty thousand dollars has any meaningful impact other than as a token contribution, and would completely wipe out an economic development tool that we've used effectively for doing, leveraging for the studies that have moved the interchange thus far, for dealing with blight issues in the community, et cetera. I think really what you're looking at is either, on one hand, either raising utility rates to generate additional revenue, just hypothetically increasing the base fee in water and sewer by X amount of dollars to agree that the council feels is acceptable, or increasing the levy in, in one fashion or another, either through general or EDA levy to generate additional dollars that would be contributed to service the debt. And if so, to what degree? I think those are really the only two reasonably available options. It's just a question of whether or not from a practical and political standpoint, those are acceptable options.
Can I quick ask a question? If we go back to the county and say, there is absolutely no feasible way for us to do anything, is the, is it just off the table? They're not going to help us on this? Are they just gonna walk away? What is your feeling in speaking with them?
I'll let Renee provide her feedback on that first.
My opinion is that there is a real desire by all the parties to move the project forward. I don't have a strong opinion about whether they're gonna, if the city council says we can't, we can't guarantee any additional finances to annual debt service. I don't have a feeling, a good feeling as to whether they'll walk away or not, but I think it's, my personal opinion is that it would look good if we did. Contribute something.
And Renee, then with that being said, what do you feel the best avenue for us is to go? What's your thought?
I personally think a tax levy.
Over the ED, or they, I mean, the EDA?
Over, yes, either through the EDA. I think that sounds preference if he was gonna choose one over a utility rate increase.
Right. Okay.
I think if we went with a proper tax option, we could do it through the general levy to fund the economic development fund, and then make contributions out of the economic development fund on an annual basis. If, or up until we feel the, those ones might be able to make those contributions on their own. Or we could do an EDA levy. It might be, we'll have some discussions with our finance people. It may be less complicated to just simply levy for funding the economic development fund on an annual basis. I, I think at this point, the mechanism is less important than the impact. Either way, you're talking a levy of X amount of dollars regardless of the specific methodology. I would agree with Renee that I think there's a strong desire. I, I'll be honest and blunt about this. I think the CDA feels that they're being asked to carry all the water, and they want somebody to help bring some. I think it's about optics and about level of comfort and them wanting other people to have some level of skin in the game.
Aren't we repaying, aren't we making regular payments based on connections, though? Aren't we deferring our payments to the county or to the CDA?
Well, the CDA would ultimately be made whole, so they would be guaranteed to receive as long as the property owners pay their property taxes, a hundred thousand dollars a year, or they'd be making two hundred and forty thousand dollars. They would, it would reduce their contribution by a hundred thousand dollars a year, so they'd be looking at two forty. That would give them capacity, as we understand it, within their financial structure to still do other things on an annual basis. If we have a big project that comes through and the rep, and we collect enough sewer and water trunk fees that exceed that annual contribution, those additional dollars would go in and it would reduce even further the county's contribution. But the one thing we have to be clear about is under this scenario, the county would be fronting the cost, and we, they would get paid on the backend, so they would be carrying that annually putting dollars, and we would, that would essentially become a, a loan or a note that we would hold and pay off over time as the property is fully developed. But they're carrying the cost on the front end, getting paid back on the backend. So there is, and that ties up resources for them for a long period of time.
So, so this levy would be the two fourteen for twenty, or per year for fifteen years?
Well, that, that's if we do the full thing, correct? We don't have to do the full thing. I mean, I think this is where we think about, this is the negotiation piece, and we think what we're comfortable with at whatever amount it might be, and we start out as low as we think is gonna be a reasonable amount that they're going to feel like we're contributing. But also, we don't have, if they say, if we go back and propose X percent or X per year, and they say, no, that's not enough, then they come back, okay, fine, maybe we decide we want to go up a little bit further. But I don't think we throw in everything that we want.
Right. So for instance, it's a question of what you can, what the council feels it can afford. So, if the council feels, we feel that we could provide twenty thousand dollars a year towards this and commit that, that would mean, in, in property taxes, the methodology to do that, it would mean that we would be provide, we would be increasing everybody's taxes between one and one point three percent. Then, to be able to fund that contribution if it's a property takes based revenue source. So it's not all or nothing. It's a, it's more of a what do you, what can you type of question.
I have a question. Renee, what are your thoughts maybe on amount?
I think in my head, I go to trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars annually. I'm not sure where Tom's, what Tom's suggestion is.
A hundred thousand annually from property taxes?
Five and change percent.
So, keep in mind what type of answer you're looking for, who you're asking. When you're asking Renee, you're asking her what do you, what does she think would be a sure, okay, or related to the discussions with the CDA? When you're asking, it comes back to what we can afford, or what the impact might be.
Right. And I'm just asking Renee on maybe what her opinion is on what she thinks. I don't know. Just trying to think of a lease amount.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, my opinion is more based on a good faith effort towards this particular project, and Tom analysis is based on the entire financial model of the city, so.
Right.
So, quick question, because I don't have the slides up in front of me. It's nineteen thousand dollars at, for one percent is twelve or twenty-one per household? What was that slide that showed that?
Twelve dollars annually, so.
Twelve dollars annually. So, we're at, if we were to do the hundred thousand dollars hypothetically speaking, it would be a five point two six percent increase.
It would be five to five and a half percent increase.
Okay, which would be roughly sixty-three dollars per household.
Where are we already looking?
If I did my math correctly, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so you'd be in that ballpark. You'd be over sixty dollars for the typical home. Less valued home would be less, more valued home would be more, but that would be the ballpark that you would be in, Kate.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
Projected increase. Next year.
For projected increase.
Joe, you cut out, what was that?
I'm sorry. I was asking, what are we already looking at for tax? Percent increase for next year?
For twenty twenty-one? That is a little bit of a, for a tax impact, I can't tell you. I can tell you that based on our projected budgets, what we're looking for for a levy, and if we assume everything else stayed the same, we can do some quick math. I can pull that up really quickly. While you continue your discussion, it'll take me a minute to get that information.
It's okay. I mean, it's not.
No, it's good to know, though. I mean, it'd be nice to know what this is gonna have the cumulative effect of.
Yeah.
It's two percent or five percent.
I would agree. I would like to know kind of roughly what we think that ballpark is gonna be.
So, and that's one of the things.
I don't think we're gonna get to a conclusion on, I don't, I'm not confident we're gonna get to a conclusion on this. I don't know, whatever the amount, I mean, if it's one percent, if it's, you know, whatever the number is, I don't know. I'm gonna wanna digest that a little bit.
Why don't we, I have a suggestion that perhaps we bring this back at the next council meeting again. We can provide more information about the tax impacts from the police department and the roundabout projects on next year's taxes, and then we can.
It's actually, it actually, the tax impact is not from the capital. We've already, we've already determined that it's gonna be driven by operational impact primarily. So, we can come back with more information. I think even be, to me, it seems that there's a late, there's a hierarchy of questions. The first question is, do you, there's two questions. One, do you have any appetite to raise property taxes? There is no, I can tell you right now, there isn't any magical silver bullet or offsets. This is an additional expense. We've pretty well extended everything out, unless you want to change just our underlying assumptions with regards to future budgets. This would likely be result in a tax increase of the amount we're talking about, or that would be the most appropriate assumption at this point. Or do you want to raise utility rates or a combination of the two? If the answer is no to both, the conversation's done. We go back and we tell the CDA, we don't have the capacity to bring any more to the table at this point. We've, have pointed out in all of our discussions with them that we have made big investments that we, in the past, that we already have commitments towards, that are helping make this happen, and we will have commitments in the future that will also help make that happen, that we're willing to say we're gonna do, but with regards to funding the utilities at this point in time, we have limited capacity. We can just take that position. Now, does that undermine our conversation or whether or not this gets done? We don't have a, we don't have a definite yes or no answer to that, but if there is no appetite to do either of rates or taxes, the conversation doesn't go any further. We're, we're done.
I think that's agreeing that we are not doing rates. Sorry, Joe. Sorry.
I, I think we're, I think I was gonna say the same words. Just gonna ask, does anybody have an appetite to increase utility rates?
No.
Okay, so that helps. So that narrows the conversation. Is there any appetite on?
No, I, I was, I mean, I think there's potentially other options, you know, I, I think we can think beyond just the property tax too. What, could we strike some sort of agreement with the county that at the end of each year, we look at whatever our excess is? We seem to always sweep, be able to sweep money over into EDA or some other funds when we save it, and then we commit to, you know, if, if at year end, we commit to always up to fifty thousand dollars, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, a minimum of ten thousand, whatever it might be, it, it, but then that allows us to have some flexibility in, you know, just depending on how the year goes. If we have more development, we bring in more funds, we bring in, you know, and we have extra, then we sweep more over to the county to, but we, we somehow guarantee or commit to, or there's been some sort of contract like that, then we're not committing to something tied to property taxes, but we're also trying. I, I don't know that.
That's a, that's a great idea, but what happens if we have one year where we don't have anything to sweep, but we still have committed to them, then we have to think of what we're gonna do at that point, and we may not be the ones on the council at that time to have to worry.
Well, if we raise property taxes, we are probably not gonna have to worry about being on the.
Well, that's true too.
Uh, in all seriousness, you know, I, I, Josh, what I'm hearing you say is that there's gotta be another, there's gotta be a more, there's gotta be more to work with, right? There's, there's gotta be another solution. I'm not saying staff hasn't, you know, came forward with the best solutions feasible, but I, we're really in a spot, or I mean, our property taxes are already hot. We can't raise our util, we can't responsibly raise our utility funds more. We are, we talked about reserves, I mean, so, you know, if, if we had to, of the, of the options presented, presented to us, the only one that would even be worth discussing would be property tax amount, but I just want, I would like to understand better what all options are. Are there any other options on the table? It's hard to just accept that there aren't. That's where I'm, that's where I'm at, Josh. That's kind of what I was hearing from you. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I would probably be saying, nope, we're tapped out. This is where we're at this, in time. And, you know, we are willing to, to think more creatively, come up with different solutions from your county CDA perspective on what would make you feel more comfortable. We get more skin in the game, whatever that looks like to you. I guess my question is, when is the next work group meeting, or when do you have to have some thoughts to bring back to them by?
Right now, our goal is that we would be having another work group meeting the week of the twentieth in April, but we do need to have some direction because we're currently working on doing financial modeling so we can understand what all of the total commitments might be from all of the parties involved. So everybody has an eyes wide open understanding of the financial implications. So understanding what our contribution might be, and that impacts what the financial contribution might be for the CDA and what that picture looks for them. So we do need to get some clarity. I would say at this point, if we want this item to keep moving, we would have to have a clearly defined answer from the council no later than our meeting on the ninth.
And I'm okay with, with discussing this and coming up with a answer on the ninth. I don't, I feel underprepared to kind of make that kind of commitment in direction. Personally, but I would like to, I know we have projected budgets. I know we have other tools out there. I know there's, I, I've, I'm not comfortable committing to anything at this meeting right now.
I agree with you, Joe. I, I think that there's gotta be other things that we can be looking at from now till our next meeting to better inform ourselves. I, I don't know that I'm ready to commit to anything unless we went back to them and said, you know what, there's absolutely nothing we can do right now. And I, I don't know that I feel that the rest of the council is ready to say that, but.
Amanda, you've been quiet. What do you, what do you think? Is Amanda still with us?
I'm in agreement that we can look at some other options. I mean, obviously increasing, those are utility rates are not ideal.
I guess I'll be, I, I will offer my opinion at this point, definitely from the council. I don't think we have the capacity unless we're looking to raise utility rates to offer anything. Or not utility rates, property taxes to useful, and that's a policy decision on the council, whether or not you want to do it. Yes, we have had years where we have had sweeps, but actually, we've used those sweeps to fund the capital projects fund, which is currently funding other projects, so we're not having to raise taxes on those. Or it's funded our capital outlay, so again, we don't have to raise property taxes because we are capturing those dollars and using it to offset other areas where we might have to have a levy. I'm gonna take the fiscally conservative approach with regards to the city and say, no, we don't have capacity. If we did, we wouldn't be going to the CDA to see if we can get this done. That's my position on it. That we need to put, right, they are asking for us to be a more of a partner. They want us to have some skin in the game. I've continually made the argument where at the meetings that we're at, that we, if we, we don't have that capacity, we have all kinds of other commitments we have just to provide the level of basic services that we have already, and we've already committed that if, that we would be open to and willing to utilize tax abatement and TIF off of the development that does occur out there to help fund transportation improvements that will be necessitated by it, which means that we will not be getting the new property taxes off of that development for a period of time. So I feel if you broaden the timeframe you're looking at from here to here, that we have made and will make a substantial financial investment in this development, but at this particular point in time with the tools that are available to us right now, I think it further reduces. I think it further reduces the flexibility and. Um, that we have as a city. Um, the council recall that with a lot of our projections within the utility funds. Um, especially, it assumes a certain level of growth, et cetera. And I think, what if that doesn't happen? What if we go into another extended recession? Extending ourselves further with those commitments puts us in a position where I just feel it extends us further.
With all of that said, I don't want to screw this up, and this is a moment in time that we actually have the county and the CDA at the table. And I mean, I would totally, speaking for myself, be willing to, you know, push comes to shove, yeah, I would commit to one to two percent. Uh, we could change that in the future too, depending on how things change and. Pull back on, I mean, it's not like we're committing to this for the next fifteen years. I mean, I, I think in good faith, well, I, I would happily. Commit to one to two percent, a dollar to two dollars a month for a few years. And if that acts me out, the council it does, because I know this is what needs to happen to get that stuff out there developed. And I think this is such a huge moment that we actually. Have these guys at the table that, I mean, on one hand, I, I just said five minutes ago that I'd be happy to say, no, let's not do it. Or we can't do anything further, but if it really means not happening, I, I think there's a little bit more leverage on the other side of it. That says I'd be willing to.
Just to kinda, you know, go off that, off Josh's statement. No one wants to see this project die. And if, if there's a, you know, virtual gun to our head saying. We need to come up with something or this project goes away. You know, I, I think. Yeah, I, I could probably come around to something as well. If we need to do, Tom, if you need to do a number for modeling purposes. Yeah, I, I think you're probably okay looking at one to two percent, but I'm so far away from committing to that right now. Um, and I know you're not asking us to commit right now, but. Yeah, like, like Josh, I don't wanna die, but we really don't have capacity, which like you said earlier, Tom. If we had capacity, we wouldn't be talking to the CDA and county. Um, I, I'd imagine you're having some, uh, you're, you're, you're in regular communications with CDA staff. I mean, do they know? They, they probably, do they have in this conversation now, and do they know how reluctant we are and how stretched we are?
We have tried to communicate that. We've indicated that this is gonna be an ask. We've tried to communicate to them what that would mean. You know, we, the, the presentation you, we just provided, we've given to them with a little bit more depth. The council has. Some familiarity with it, so we didn't go into the same detail we did with them. So I think we, we've explained it, but. Uh, I think there, I'll, I'll be again, very blunt and forward. I think they work in an environment. That where, when they're working with cities, it's typically a negotiation, and I think they're approaching this possibly as a bit of a negotiation. I think the impact to their finances, and we're talking twenty thousand dollars one way or another. Ultimately is not big dollars. I think they're looking for, they want to see if we can squeeze another drop. A flood out of the turnip. They want, they want that skin in the game. I think they're looking for something, quite honestly. They're not looking for us to put out. I don't think they're looking for us to put in an additional hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but I think they're looking for something, and so that's my opinion. And so the question is, what is that? Something.
Mister Mayor. Just a quick thought, you know, we, we applied for a fair amount of grants on behalf of the city and have been pretty successful. A lot of those have a ten percent local match. That seems to me, just in my gut, that would be kind of a floor that would seem meaningful. It would be in the realm of the one, two percent tax impact you're talking about. Might be something to. To, uh, at least try and koala us around to see if that would move them.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Well, well, thanks, Rich. Well, let me, let me just kinda, let's just take a little straw, pull the rest of the, from everybody on the council. Kate, are you, is it? Are you okay if this project dies, if we come back with a statement of we can't contribute anything?
I am not okay if it dies, um, but I, I think that I would like to go to them and say, right now, we can't do anything. Hence why we're coming to you. Um, if they start to show signs to Tom or Renee that, hey, okay, we're gonna be out. Then I think it's up to Tom and Renee to say, okay, we don't wanna see it die. Let's go back to the council, see what we can do. That gives us a little bit more time to prepare. But I, I think we need to go to them and say, there's a reason we're coming to you. We don't have the ability to do this. Um, we need your help.
So if it was, if it was a do or die scenario where we either raise taxes of one percent. Or it goes away, would you be willing?
I would, I would, I would have to raise taxes one percent because I feel that our community needs that development out there.
Okay, Don.
I am with Kate on that. I'd like to try to say, this is why we're coming to you guys. We don't have the resources right now, but I don't wanna see it die, absolutely not. So.
All right, Commissioner Novak. Or Councilmember Novak, sorry. Amanda.
I am in the same boat. I don't want this to die. I think this is one of our last options or opportunities here, so.
Josh, do you have anything more to add? Oh, I don't see Josh, but I'm assuming.
No, I'm good. I agree with everything.
Okay. All right, so Tom, if we're giving you direction that would be, you know, pushed back. Uh, you know, maybe share with the CDA and county how. How reluctant our council is to do that and why we're to do that, but know in the back of your mind that we're willing to have that conversation. If push comes to shove, does that help?
I, I think we can try and couch it that way. Um, I do have the budget pulled up. I can show you what the projected levy differences are. For twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, if that helps or helps illustrate, I think, the point that you're making, if you don't mind.
I don't think it hurts to look at it. I just, I'm just being honest. I'm not gonna be ready to make any decision on anything tonight. But, yeah, it's not gonna hurt to take a look, so we all have some context as to what we're talking about.
So this information is actually included. You don't have your hard copy budgets. We'll be putting those together with the amendments that we just talked about. But if we look at our, the levy calculation tab. Um, what it shows is that right now, for year plus one, we are looking at an eight point nine percent. Eight point nine six percent levy increase. Based on the projected budget that the council had, um, approved for planning purposes, and we're looking at about a two percent, little less than a two percent. Levy increase in year two. Now, that's just the percentage of levy increase. It gets back to actual dollars that you're looking at. So you're looking at about a two hundred and seventeen thousand dollar. Now, that can, depending on what's driving that. If that's debt service, et cetera, um, that year plus one, a lot of that cost right off the top of the bat is a police officer. So you're looking at, um, close to a hundred thousand dollars just for the police officer, um, that we had tentatively planned for in twenty twenty-one. Um, and then there's other miscellaneous costs, um, running down through the, the, the general fund budget. If you look at year plus two, we're actually looking or projecting that the levy is gonna be very flat. Uh, the increases that we're seeing are twenty, half of it, almost half of it is just the planned increase in what we're levying for the twenty eighteen fund. Um, uh, deficit buy down plan. So we are looking at a big jump in, in twenty, um, potentially jump in twenty twenty-one. However, there are ways, once we actually get to twenty twenty-one budget plan, that we can shave peaks, fill valleys. Or make decisions related to some of those, you know, those assumptions. Um, but I think it's fair to say that realistically, there will be some increase in the coming. In the, in the next two years of at least an inflationary amount, um, moving forward. Does that help?
Yeah, and I think it gets back to, um. And, and that's where, if we can get creative, I mean, cause then I can see, uh, every year we commit to one percent. Maybe that's the, the minimum that we always do. And then you look in twenty twenty-two where we're looking at a one point eight, blah, 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 and might not end up being that, but then if. If we say we're comfortable raising taxes up to five percent every year, or, you know, we, we give ourselves some wheel room that way. We'll do, we'll see your one percent, but then we'll add on whatever that difference is between that, you know, one point eight seven to, to five. And we'll, we'll actually do three percent in twenty twenty-two because we're still keeping under our magical number that we're comfortable with, with at least at this point in time.
I think from a contractual standpoint, that becomes difficult to, to write out. I think you commit to. Here's what we can, here's what we can provide. Um, one of the.
Well, this is a starting point for conversation.
It is. Now, there are, there are things that we did talk to them about in the utility funds that. Let's say development is very robust over the next five to six years, and we get back to a minimum fund balance. Now, we're talking a fifteen and possibly up to twenty year timeframe, depending on what term we use for the debt. If during that timeframe, our fund balances in our utility funds reach a certain trigger point. We have had discussions that we may be willing to commit that, once we reach, let's say, a hundred and fif, a hundred and fifty percent of the minimum fund balance. Anything above that, we might sweep over, because by then the funds would be healthy and robust enough to sweep over. Um, and actually what it would be is it would just be reducing that, and at that point, if they're healthy enough, we don't need their help, because we can fund it on our own. But that's, uh, down the road if things pan out. What they're kind of asking for and what we're talking about now is what are we willing to commit now?
Right. Yeah, what, I'm just, I don't know, what, what really bothers me about this is that. A one percent tax increase is a big deal to us. What the actual impact that a one percent tax increase actually gives to this project is so minute. I don't know, it, it's just, it's frus, it's frustrating to me.
Five percent of the gap.
All right, so what do we, what do we wanna do then? Tom, do you feel you have direction from our conversations?
Can I, um, state what I think the direction is, and then you guys can give me head nods if that's the case. I wanna make sure that we're, we're clear on this. What I'm hearing from the council is that you feel that given our current situation at this time, we don't have the financial capacity. To contribute more than we already have and are committing to in the future. Due to other commitments that we have basically to deliver basic services as a city and other, um, without stretching ourselves. To, um, beyond what would be wise. Um, to our, and, and fair to our taxpayers, peers on the system. However, if the CDA really feels that it's absolutely necessary to contribute, we want them to just not say, hey, we want you to do more. They need to give us a number. Is that fair?
Sounds fair to me.
Yeah, I think that sounds fair. If we could get a number, that would help us out so much, but.
That sounds fair to me.
Josh and Amanda, you guys okay?
All right, I couldn't unmute. I was stuck. No, I, I mean, I think, it just, yes, no, absolutely, that, that's perfectly fine. I just wanna us to continue to think really creatively. Um, and, and to make them feel confident and comfortable that they're not gonna be on the hook if things go upside down and, uh, they get stuck with it. So, I mean, if that were to ever happen, then, you know, maybe there's ways that we jump in and, uh, development doesn't happen, they poop out. They don't get paid, you know, then we, as a city, are, are we on the hook then to commit to? Can we be on the hook to help? I mean, I, I think that's what, if we can make the county, the CDA feel comfortable and confident that they're gonna get their money back. And, and that's what they're worried about, then we offer whatever assurances we can, within whatever creative contract writing we can do. Um, to make it happen.
I think the issue with the CDA is not that they're worried about getting their money back. It's that by, they're committing a large amount of their resources. I don't, my impression of the way they're thinking isn't. We're gonna get it back. It's, we have, they have so much financial bandwidth in any given year to do stuff. And they're committing a certain portion of that bandwidth annually for this. They know they'll get paid back on the end, and I think they're okay with that. It's how much of that bandwidth were our project would be sucking up on an annual basis. And they're trying to reduce that. Um, I know politically, they're probably gonna argue with the county, argue to the county board. That this shouldn't occur within their existing bandwidth, but the county should expand, the county board should levy additionally to expand their bandwidth. To take this project on. There were some undertones in the meetings there we were in that suggested that, but that's between them and the county. I think the issue is simply, we have so much bandwidth, we're trying to reduce how much annually is committed to this so we can still do other things.
I just, I don't see how twenty thousand, if that's what the number is, and I don't see how that helps their bandwidth, really. I mean, with the dollar amount we're talking about. You know, we, it's like basically a gesture of goodwill.
And maybe that's what they're, all they're looking for, I'm not sure. Um, there was also a suggestion, uh, that. They are paying, um, annually towards the connection fee, their connection fees at the senior housing building. There was a comment made that perhaps the city could, uh, forgive that.
I think that's fair, I think that's fair game. We, we look at the impact that may have on the utility funds. Um, it would, if we take a look at our charts on the utility fund. Um, give me a second here. The council can see, if we're looking at our projected fund balance in both wastewater and in water. What it would do is we would essentially be not receiving annual revenue for them over the next. Um, five or six years. That's how much they have remaining. It's about a hundred and seventy-eight, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of revenue. So what it would do is it would depress or flatten these lines and push the point at which we're projected to cross our minimum fund balance out a year or two. So it would lessen the health, it would push. That five-year threshold when we would be at minimum balance out to maybe like six or seven years. That would be the net effect as best as we can model it. At this particular time, um, I do know that that particular issue. Um, with the, um, CDA, again. Financially for them, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. It's a little bit more money, but. Again, there's an optics and a feel-good aspect of that. They. There is some heartburn with them with regards to having to pay those fees related to that project. And this buys goodwill. I'll be honest, I think what they're looking for is goodwill contribution. I think the amount is less important than we are providing something.
That seems like a pretty easy solution right there.
Yeah, it does, but. Then aren't we doing a lot more than what we had initially thought we'd have to do?
No, if it was twenty. If you, if you look at it, if it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it'd be equivalent to twenty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
You know. So, it actually would, might be less than that perpetual commitment of twenty thousand dollars, but might provide more goodwill. The one thing the House Council would have to be in, keep, be mindful of is that it would reduce the projected fund balance projections down. It would depress that in the models, and so there would be a greater risk to us financially if we did not have. The level of development that we're projecting and level of user fees that we're collecting materialize the way that we have indicated. Um, when we run the model, um, those funds start to look, those projections look a lot different. With only getting eighty-five percent, eighty to eighty-five percent of what we're projecting. And if you'd like to see that, I can pull up the model and I can put those assumptions in there, and it can give you an idea of what that impact might be. Would you like to do that?
Sure.
And as you're, as you're doing that too, I mean, I think, and I don't know if I'm helping or hurting the conversation, I can move back and forth, uh, on everything. I move back and forth on everything, but I mean, I we, we, we've put a lot of skin in the game over the past period of years, and, you know, development across the county has continued to happen. We've continued to pay for some of that development through county taxes and 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 other things as well. So, I mean, I I I don't feel horribly bad asking for some additional assistance, which ultimately is going to benefit the county as a whole. When we develop out there towards that intersection and we bring more businesses into our county, it's not just bringing stuff to Elkanu Market. It's 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 putting Scott County, putting more resources and and everything into the county as well. So, I mean, I think they're investing in themselves in this process. So it's not just that we're asking to help each, help help us out. It's help everybody out. And we've been doing that, I think, over the years too.
Mr. Mayor, have a question. Am I off?
Nope, you're on.
I think you bailed for a second.
Tom, I'm just wondering, have we named and tried to quantify the investments already made and and commitments to help them better understand the magnitude and duration of those commitments?
Yes. So the council, I've I've, basically what I did, well, there was discussion going on, is I took our projected development and I simply reduced it in any given year overall by 20%. So we'd be getting 80% of what our projected development is in the model. You recall that in the wastewater fund, in 2025, the fund balance would be somewhere up here. When you're looking at the water fund, the fund balance would be somewhere up here. So you'll see that even getting 20% left, only only 80% of what we're projected has a significant impact on our fund balances going forward. That's what I'm talking about when we're discussing sensitivity. Now, if we get 85% of the projected development, it looks a little bit better. But if you're looking at these fund balances, the amount that we're collecting off of the CDA is, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in each of the fund. It's not make it make a huge difference, but it does provide some additional flexibility and reserves within the fund, a certain level of tolerance against neg-, you know, negative occurrences within the model that are worse than we have projected, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that helped.
And I do think that we could provide that relief. You just have to know, the council just has to be aware that it changes our our projections a little bit, but it's not a one chunk gone at one time. It's a reduction in anticipated revenue each year. And of that year's revenue, it's not a huge amount. It's a little piece. It's just a cumulative effect of that 178,000 some dollars.
Any further thoughts on that from anyone?
Is that an area you want us to explore or potentially offer?
I think that is something reasonable to have on the table. Yeah.
I agree with you, Mayor. I think that's definitely something that we could explore if it comes down to it. I guess I'd rather see that versus a levy.
Yep. Sorry, go on, Don.
No, I was just saying, I feel the same. Sorry, I keep muting and unmuting because my dogs are going nuts watching the boys throw the football around outside.
No worries. Any other comments? Hearing none. Tom, are you comfortable then with what you have in front of you?
I think so. I guess I'd like to get Renee's feedback too, as to where she feels we are in the conversation, and if we're at a point that we've got something that we feel we can take back to the CDA.
I do. I think the direction is, whether council really is not in favor of a tax levy increase for residents who do not want to see the parrot die. They may be willing to discuss a waiver of the annual.
The one thing I do want to point out, also, is that there really was a lot of positivity to try and make this happen. So this wasn't contentious, or it didn't feel like a negotiation room when we're having the discussion. So this isn't adversarial at all with our partners. It's actually a really good environment to have the discussion. And if I was in their seat, I'd probably be asking the same question, but we do need to give them an answer on on this question. I think I have what we need, Mr. Mayor.
You're, you have the agenda, so.
We were just on community development updates. Does anybody have any questions regarding anything going on in community development?
It's like they're building, building something on 291. So must, is it safe to assume that everything got cleared away that needed to be cleared away?
That is not correct. That building permit has been issued, was issued quite some time ago. They just did not start construction until most recently. That building permit had been issued and subsequent conversations with the developer indicated that no more, no additional building permits would be issued until some things arose.
The council is aware, I am currently working with the developer, although the week that I was having some communications with the developers when COVID-19 decided to poke it set up. So that whole discussion got put on hold for the last two weeks. I'll be picking that up here next week to see if that can be resolved. Just FYI, the developer has expressed some concerns with the amount of engineering fees associated with the project. I have taken a look at and still in the process of taking a look at what's driving it, but to be very, to put it very simply, it had to do with the amount of time that the developer was on the site. The project, based on the developer's own estimate, was going to be a two or three-week project. They were on the site for over 50 working days. That was a result of a number of things which aren't necessarily the developer's fault. It included the weather. You recall it was very wet and the soils and conditions on the site were very challenging. However, and and that time, time results in time build and time build results in higher dollar amounts. And in talking with the inspectors directly who are on the project and getting feedback on it, I don't know that any of the time that was billed appears to be inappropriate. It's just that there was a lot of it relative to that project because of those factors. I think that the developer may want to request or come to talk to the council on this. I'm just telling you that my position on that is I would be happy to put it on the agenda if he has a specific request and rationale. But if he just wants to come and open ended discussion with the council, I'm not going to put it on the agenda. I want him to have an action item that the council can respond to. Not just, hey, it cost me a lot of money in engineering. Yes, it did. Everybody agrees with that. But what is your request? Was it built erroneously? Are you requesting a specific type of relief, et cetera? But I want to, I I want it to be an action item, not just a a general statement about it. So the council has something they can react to and potentially.
But he could decide to come and speak under public, huh?
He can. I just won't. If it's not an action item, I'm not going to put it on the agenda.
Oh, I get it. Yeah. All right. Anything else? What's next, huh?
The next item on the agenda would be community and civic events. That meeting was canceled, so I don't think Don will have.
Oh, did you, did you miss Parks?
Yeah, just because we're going to make you sit here all night, Mark. No.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I did get some definition from the governor's office on the definition of playground. And let me read this to you, because I think it's going to be pretty clear that we have to close the playgrounds down, but you let me know your thoughts. They sent a four-page memo out here about 6:15 on everything that went on with the executive order 2020 yesterday, and here's a part that affects us. Individuals may also engage in outdoor activities, so walking, hiking, running, biking, hunting and fishing, and they go to available public parks, excluding outdoor playground equipment consistent with the remaining at least six feet apart from individuals, not with individuals' household portrayals. So I think it's pretty clear that that's something we're going to have to do here before the end of the day tomorrow. I've been in touch with the league and Minnesota Cities and Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association to get some definition as to how we want to present this. Is this the kind of thing that we need to enforce, or is this the kind of thing that we just want on the website and post that says you're not supposed to be on it? So I'll get some perspective tomorrow morning on what other cities are doing to handle this, but even though it wasn't specific in the governor's address, it looks like we will need to close down that playground tomorrow.
I think I can answer part of that question right now. We've already discussed this with the emergency management team. If the parks were to close, we'll either be signing and or just putting tape around them. We don't have the capacity or materials to be able to put, you know, eight-foot tall fencing around all of the parks. And it's an honor system anyways. We're not going to be writing tickets if somebody takes their kids to play in the park. So more than likely, we'll be signing that they're closed and promoting to the community that they are closed and that we do not sanitize them. And it will be up to individuals to decide whether or not they're actually going to, going to use them.
Just want to make sure that we meet the expectations of what the governor thinks is going to happen. We'll see, you know, as Tom said, that's that's the plan. And we'll see if there's any definition, further definition tomorrow morning from the league. They're out there working on it right now, and I've got a couple other emails to go through with them, but if it's okay with you, the the team will just figure out how to do it and get it done. I think it's a shame, but the parks, of course, remain open, trails remain open as well too, so.
The city, I guess, and put some communication out or something.
Yeah.
We'll be putting that out tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Mark.
No, I, you know, I I'm sure everyone knows how I feel about it. I'd love to see the kids be able to play out there and the rest, but, you know, it's safety sake. Got to do it.
Thanks, Mark.
The only remaining items are the committee and board reports, of which I don't think there's going to be many, because most of them have been canceled. The first one was scale, both the executive committee, the service delivery committee, and the unified transit committee. I believe all of those have been canceled, have they not, Mr. Mayor?
I believe they have two. However, I've been in discussions today about how to, you know, do we go with the virtual meeting for at least scale exec? And we're kind of in a weird area right now where, you know, Mayor Briggs of Prior Lake is, was chair of scale. Now we're not sure if I'm chair of scale or if he's. So we're we're kind of working through some of that stuff right now, but yeah, I I I am working on getting information or getting soliciting feedback from the rest of scale numbers as to what would be helpful and what would be beneficial. I do think this is a good opportunity for scale, not maybe opportunity is the wrong word, but, you know, we're we're scale. You know, say what you want about the actual meetings of scale. Sometimes the content's interesting, sometimes it's not. I'm, the real benefit of scale is getting all these people together in one place and being able to bounce ideas off each other and, you know, share best practices and that sort of thing. And I can say me and the other mayors in Scott County have been doing that regularly anyway, but you know, there's people from the school department, there's county folks, there's people from the tribe, there's there's a lot of different people that are all dealing with different things, yet similar things in their communities. And it would be, yeah, I think it would be beneficial to have something. So while there's no, right now, there's no scheduled scale meeting, however, yeah, I'm working on trying to come up with something, so more to go.
This delivery committee did not meet. The UTMP, the unified transit management plan committee did not meet either. Their meeting was canceled. Minnesota Valley Transit Authority.
Also canceled.
I-35 Solutions Alliance.
We had that before the last council meeting, and we don't have another one in April anyway, so the next one was supposed to be May.
And Chamber of Commerce.
Well, for Chamber of Commerce, I will say I've been talking with Josh from the Chamber a few times this week so far. Just trying to keep good open minds of communications. We can hear what's going on in the community, what concerns that we, what things we might be missing, that sort of thing from Elkanu Market businesses. So, and Josh, I would say he's done just a terrific job from what I've seen. So, yeah, but we're staying in close communication, trying to make sure that we, as a city, can hear what the concerns of the businesses are and how we might be able to help.
One thing that we've been doing is we've been getting a lot of notices from various agencies about small business loans and other assistance that are being provided through the state and feds. And Renee's making an excellent job of forwarding those on to the chamber so we can get that information out to their members.
I'd also like to add that the state is holding annual video chats or conference calls every morning at 7 o'clock from 7:00 to 7:30 to review issues related to businesses and employment and stuff of that sort. So Haley, this, we're there, they're sponsored by D. And Haley and I will most likely be participating in those. They're scheduled for the next two weeks, every day at 7:00 a.m. They're basically like a Zoom meeting, so anybody that wants to join, if anybody's interested in the link to the, those meetings, I can provide you.
All right. Tom, what's next?
Any discussion items by council, Mr. Mayor?
Anyone have anything? I feel it in the background in Brady's house.
I built that myself.
You hear nothing? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by someone I didn't catch.
I think it was a tie.
I believe it was Amanda.
Yeah, I think.
Let's go with Amanda. All right. Tom, do we really need to roll, do a roll call vote for this?
They want to raise their hand.
Can we just say, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.